...followed by Drew Thompson. Barb, are they okay? Again, three minutes if you would, please.
I request you revisit the September 2017 approval. For all the reasons that Caneo Creek and Caneo Creek two developments were not approved, those and more should cause you to withdraw approval. One being residual DDT in the once farmland which the golf course used to be a part. Approval was based thinking that most supported it. I would like everybody in the room tonight who is opposing this development to raise your hand and wave them wildly. It's not true, we all support it. People were threatened with closure of the golf course that had become overgrown and unsightly and fenced off. Richards did not do his homework to find out the golf course had other extremely important purposes besides golf. Each of the six developments already in the springs was approved based on the caveat that the golf course would serve as a floodplain for Caneo Mountain and the entire community. You take away the floodplain and you take away an approval condition for the existing homes, potentially putting them in danger. The hydrology firm Pace presented their plans. As a mathematician, I did modeling for the government. Results are only as good as the data used to drive the model. Without actual data, the modeling results are sketchy at best. I asked if actual Camp Springs data was used to drive the model. The answer, no. Data used for the modeling came from FEMA data for Caneo Creek and from a watershed north of 101. I asked if they knew there was a USGS rain gauge on Caneo Mountain that was there in February 2017 when the golf course flooded. The answer, no. The hydrologists deduced the majority of the flooding comes from the overflow of Caneo Creek through the fields to the golf course, which we know not to be true. JLJ firm Grover Hollingsworth analyzed Caneo Mountain and proved it is unique from other mountains in the area. Therefore, the modeling is invalid for proving their development will cause no harm to existing homes. Newey wants to build homes on a platform and add berms along Ridge View. Basically, a dam on the western end of the golf course. They intend to add drains in the golf course from the eastern end near Lata to Caneo Creek and take away the replenishment of the groundwater, sending it to the ocean. Silt could block those drains and potentially flood the homes. If the city allows these homes to be built, then you're going to assume the liability later when Newey is gone and homes are flooded because the floodplain was changed. During Hurricane Harvey, Houston learned that building on floodplain causes flooding where it did not previously occur. Roberts bought a golf course, a green space, a wildlife habitat corridor, and a floodplain. He's not entitled to have it rezoned for homes when doing so will be detrimental to both human and wildlife health and well-being. So, if you allow them to continue, they will be so entrenched that they're going to use legal means to force you to approve it and go forward. Never forget the debris flows of 2014.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Drew Thompson, followed by, I believe it's Elizabeth Sheban, I believe. Drew?
Good evening, honorable board. My name is Drew Thompson. I live in Camarillo Springs. I've been there 10 years. I'm actually speaking a little bit here from a gentleman that is from the Escondido area that Newey was involved with one of their golf courses, also on a floodplain. Basically, Mr. Frank Fain advised us that they've had numerous battles with this Newey Corporation and that Mr. Richards and his crew actually sued the board $100 million because of the results that they were not able to build on that property. The golf course there is detrimental. It's basically abandoned at this point in time. What I'd like to get on to what Barbara was saying earlier is liability. Liability, okay? Let's say you guys do approve it and they do build their properties and a flood comes because the rocks and silt will come again. It's not if, it's when. It's happened before, it'll happen again. There's photographs of 1983 floods there. All the dams, all their drains clog up and all of a sudden you've got death and property damage. What's the first thing Newey's going to do, come into court? They're going to sue you guys and they're going to say, "Well, they gave us the build, they gave us the approval, they rezoned it." It's a lose-lose for the city. It's a lose-lose for the community. Whereas if you guys leave it alone, leave it status quo as a golf course, it's non-habitual, there's no residents there, if it floods, it floods. Nobody dies, there's no property loss. Either way, it's a win-win for the city in that format. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Elizabeth, I believe it's Sheban, and Cheryl Hardwood is next. Is Elizabeth here tonight? There she is.
Did I pronounce your last name right? Cheever.
Cheever, thank you.
You're close, though.
Thank you.
It's maybe the French version.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Elizabeth Cheever and we've been in Camarillo Springs 20 years. Our house sits on the golf course on Margarita. We don't support the 300 homes in the springs because it will cause irreversible harm to our wildlife there. I sit every day watching the wildlife, which is abundant. Camarillo Springs has the support of the Sierra Club because of the abundance of wildlife there, such as the white and gray pelicans, white and gray egrets, and red-tailed hawks, deer grays where New Urban West plans to build exactly. The Canadian geese have occupied a particular area as their home. They refuse to move even when the golf carts come at them full force. We've seen road runners, bobcats, rabbits, raccoons meet us at our patio back door. Mountain lions have left the carcasses of deer on the course. Mountain lions found a refuge in Camarillo Springs after the recent fires destroyed their homes. Two mountain lions were seen at the spring's front gate just two weeks ago. The urbanization in the U.S. has been found to be directly responsible for the endangerment of 275 species of wildlife. Biodiversity is greatly reduced when large areas of natural habitat are fragmented, as it would be if the building is allowed. Small habitat patches are unable to support the same level of genetic and taxonomic diversity as they formerly could. And more, some of the more sensitive species may even become locally extinct. Destruction of the habitat of a wild species intentionally or unintentionally leads to extinction of species. Habitats may be destroyed by urban and suburban development. We have great news. The endangered bird, the leasebells' vario, has been sighted within Camarillo Springs. The Center for Biological Diversity has stated that the center's extensive work to protect the leasebells' vario and its habitat by opposing harmful projects has been ongoing for more than a decade. In response to the center's lawsuit, they had a lawsuit in 2008. The Army Corps of Engineers revoked authorization to begin work on the Shadow Rock Luxury Hotel and golf development in Chino Canyon, California, and port leasebells' vario habitat. The center also filed a lawsuit to stop Steven Spielberg from building Dreamsworks Plaza Vista on one of the Los Angeles last-
Elizabeth, if you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it. I'm trying to keep everybody at three minutes, please.
My final part is Camarillo Springs is most enclosed by the Caneo Mountains and wildlife survival is more susceptible to construction and digging up earth toxins and unbearable noise. It is important to realize that Richards does not have the best interests of the people or the wildlife within our community. We live in a jewel where there is no other place like it, in all Camarillo, or maybe even Ventura. The wildlife there is abundant and it is growing. So, please, help us protect it and protect our residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Cheryl Harwood, followed by Mike Mishler, followed by Mark Malloy. Is Cheryl here? Yeah, we do. Yes, we're in reset. Again, if you could keep it to three minutes, Cheryl, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Honorable counsel and staff, my name is Cheryl Harwood. I'm a long-term resident of Camarillo Springs. I'm talking to you on subsidence, which is the earth's surface sinking and that's when ground sinks and houses sink. We have concerns, we have legitimate concerns about certain conditions that exist in this area that you are talking about. Flooding, the golf course is on the Camarillo floodplain and it's a FEMA-designated floodzone. We have concerns about aquifers. If there's pressure on aquifers and Camarillo is part of the Oxnard Delta, we have desalinization in Camarillo, so we know that there is aquifers in this area. We have this Camarillo Springs that pop up all over the place. There's one on the golf course before that we had these floods that we've recently, and rains that we've recently had. And the picture that I have given you all is the oil field that used to be exactly in Camarillo Springs Club area that had the drillings and disturbance of the ground from rigs and oil wells and residue and pockets. There's liquefaction from earthquakes and FEMA requires that this land be built up at least eight to 10 feet in elevation. Fresh soil is more vulnerable to liquefaction and subsidence problems. One inch of subsidence downward motion and the structure of your house, the foundation, cracks. This can be up to $100,000 of damage. And guess what? It takes 15 years. They only have responsibility, any builder, for 10. So, who are they going to come to for help? You know, I'm going to do a pretend build with you because I, just imagine, you have to build eight to 10 feet in the air. One ton is what a cubic square yard weighs, one ton. Figure out that there's 750,000 tons of dirt in this build. A house, the smallest house I could find, is 40,000 tons. This build of 300 houses is 2 million tons of pressure on already ground that has geologically challenged issues. And my estimations, I did not even consider the weight of foundations, the weight of streets, the weight of underground pipe systems, the weight of the things you have in your home, and tons, cars weigh three tons each. I am just telling you, please, please, consider our concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mike Mishler, followed by Mark Malloy, followed by Milton Dorsey. Mike, are you here? Again, three minutes if you would, Mike, please.
Good evening, Mike Mishler. Good evening, counsel. Mike Mishler from Camarillo, not at the Camarillo Springs area, north of the freeway. I'm here basically to say the same thing that I brought up in September of 2017 when this project was first proposed. And let me start off by saying, as everybody in this room knows, and Kevin mentioned it here just a little while ago, every site has local issues and they vary across the community of course. I usually refer to those as tactical issues, so, and you have already heard a bunch of those. But I'm not here to talk about those. I'm here to talk about how a proposed development of a golf course impacts the entire community. Because you have a golf course which already is providing recreation and open space and what we have here is a problem where in our community, we have not yet sat down and built a vision 50 years down the road, how this community looks at our golf courses and how they tie into recreation and long-term open space 50 years from now. We don't have that vision. For example, this was done up in Thousand Oaks back in 1977 where they sat down and they looked at this and they formed a joint powers agreement between the city of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Wreckin Park to, that's when they created the Caneo Open Space Conservator- Conservation Agency. And in the last 40 years, each of those organizations putting in 50%, they had a master vision and plan what they're doing for. They've already acquired 12,000 acres, over 12,000 acres of open space and have over 150 miles of trail systems put together by working together and having that vision. We don't have that in this community. So, what I'm saying is, one of the issues we have is we need to kind of put a temporary freeze on looking at all aspects. The developer can still look at stuff, but what we need to do is get together mainly between the city and, I would recommend, Wreckin Park and build this, other stakeholders and just build out our vision for a community-wide impact and what do we want to look at for golf courses? And you, we already know, everybody in this room's already heard, the Sterling Hills now golf course is also looking at development. So, we're starting off, we've opened up this Pandora box. So, we need to look at that, figure out what the issues are, what our vision is, make up a checklist of issues to work with, and then do a top-down approach instead of a bottom-up where the developer is looking. You can still have proposed development and stuff moving forward, but you look at the strategic issues, citywide issues first, and then you work your way down to the tactical issues, not doing a bottom-up approach like we're doing now. Because what we're doing now is not going to address any of the strategic issues going across the entire community. That's the point I wanted to make back then and make again now, and it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mark Malloy, followed by Milton Dorsey.
Mike is going to serve as my banner white, which just shows, which just shows how desperate I am. Because the, because the council's policy is to not, don't overdo it.
You could hold to the three minutes.
Because the council's policy is to not allow speakers to present graphics, I had to pay Quinko's $97 to print this out. And it's an area, as you can see, that surrounds the area that will be converted from golf course to housing. And when I read the agenda item, it said that this is about a 30-acre rezoning. And it's not really about a 30-acre rezoning, it's about converting 2.7 million square feet, which works out to 63 acres, away from public recreational use. And that's converting an area larger than PV Fields or Regional Sports Park. And the other thing I noticed in the agenda item was the claim that there's 152 acres remaining for the golf course. And this is absolutely not true. Technically, there'd be 152 acres left, but they're certainly not developable for a golf course. There's two areas. First is this one right in here. It's a very steep mountain area, there's radio wave towers at the top of it, and it's mostly rock, as you can see, almost nothing's growing on it. It's only, it's only accessible to the golf course here on the south side and there's very little of that could possibly be used. The second area of the golf course that, or of the property that potentially could be developed is over here next to holes five and six. And that area there is, as some of the older timers here might recall, was attempted to develop one-acre lots. And when they started doing the grading, they ran into two mashed burial artifacts and had to stop the project. So, that area, which based on the landscape, I figured you could put two or three small holes on it, but that area is not really going to be usable for golf because of its history. So, the truth is, there's very little area on this property available for golf that isn't already being used for golf. According to the proposed flood plan, now, water now flowing onto the golf course over Ridge View will be diverted to the south side of the course where holes two through six are. So, the bottom line on all of this stuff is that eight of our 18 golf holes are going to disappear. Holes two through six are going to have to hold dramatically more flooding water because they're going to take all the flooding water where the golf course is now and move it over the other side. And there's almost no additional space for golf. The city of Ventura's independent golf study showed that the only viable golf course is an 18-hole one. Anything shorter than that is got dramatically reduced revenues and almost the same expenses. It just doesn't work. The farther along in this project that the planning has gone, the less sense it makes. Please do not rubber stamp this decision of a previous council that is so clearly not in the community's interest. I ask you stop it tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mark. Next is Milton Dorsey, followed by Deb Morris. Is Milton here?
Good evening, your honorable mayor, city council members, staff. My name is Milton Dorsey. I live in Camarillo Springs. Trying to get a real estate agent to be honest with me about what will happen to my home value if it's, if New Urban West does this project and builds these 300 homes was tough. They have a vested interest, money. Common sense tells me that these new homes will devalue my old 1989 home value. Let's assume these 300 New Urban West homes are built. They'll be 10 to 13 feet higher than the surrounding homes and have golf course views. What will affect the Camarillo Springs Country Club manufactured home values? A glut of new senior homes with views? Several years of construction resulting in dust and noise with very serious threat to, excuse me, residents' health? The view of unmaintained acreage and towering embankments with new homes on top of them looking down? Those are those berms that they're talking about? Continued threat of flooding and mandatory flood insurance? All New Urban West is interested in is developing and selling 300 homes. They don't manage and maintain golf courses or restaurants. So, who will? If they sell it, then what? If and when somebody buys the golf course and restaurant and it's not profitable, what happens then? Will it be left unmaintained to deteriorate and become what we have now, but with 300 additional homes? The new clubhouse and restaurant, it sounds good. It's also marketed as an event destination center, great. More traffic on the weekends. With a smaller golf course, maybe even a nine-hole, what attraction is that? The wildlife corridor has me worried, too. We disrupt our habitat by scraping off areas of the golf course to build new homes. Where are they going to go? The traffic impact is immense. 300 to 600 more cars to contend with. We had trouble evacuating during the fire just a little while ago, a couple hours wait just to get out. Now we have another 600 cars? Doesn't make sense. We'll have traffic lights instead of traffic stops, you know, no signs, no slowing down, just all lights. It's a little, it reminds me of just another Southern Californian suburb. I grew up, I grew up in the valley. We're getting to be like the valley. It's just cluttered. It's just too much. In summary...
All right. Could you wrap it up? Please, you're at three minutes. I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much, and let him speak.
Thank you very much for your comments. Deb Morris, followed by Karen Cord, followed by Matt Lorimer.
Oh, it feels good to stand up.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Deb Morris. I live in Camarillo Springs, save the golf course. Ron Richards and New Urban West can do with their property what they want, assuming they follow all the city of Camarillo regulations. The build site is inside a FEMA-designated floodplain, zoned rural-exclusive, and is continuing to operate as a golf course. The floodplain is essential to the water and wildlife stability of Camarillo Springs. If you deny the plan and Mr. Richards' threat to close the golf course, surround it with a fence, and turn it into weeds is realized, then so be it. In the past, his business model has routinely yielded him and his partners hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines and removal expenses. Punishing our neighborhood and the city of Camarillo with such actions will only diminish the value of his property. A rezoning denial will urge Mr. Richards to sell his property, and he can sell it as a golf course or open space, his choice. If he decides to turn the golf course into ruin, we will have at least retained open space, no walls, no berms, and no new homes. Hopefully, in the future, the city of Camarillo and/or another investor will purchase the property for recreation and other appropriate purposes. Approving the plan comes with a downside payment of 300 new homes and will remove a minimum of 63 acres from our golf course use. Mr. Richards and New Urban West actually plan, actual plan has not been submitted to the city. We can only react to the trial balloons concepts that they present to our community. It's not clear that any building will ever be approved, especially if the floodplain issue remains unresolved. If they do build homes, general discussions have floated from six to 12 holes for golf. If we use nine holes, let's refer to the Ventura 2017 feasibility study to convert to the Bueno Ventura Golf Course from 18 holes to nine. To summarize the report, they would lose 73% of their net revenue, which to me spells out of business. New Urban West stood right here and confirmed they would sell the golf course and the clubhouse with the homes as soon as everything was built. But who would buy a failing nine-hole golf course? And wouldn't it soon turn into weeds as well? Camarillo Springs, opposecamarillospringsbuilding.com. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Cord, Matt Lorimer, and then Peter Faxon, I believe. Is Karen here? Again, three minutes if you could, Karen.
My name is Karen Cord, and I've been a resident of Camarillo Springs for 18 years. And I've seen a couple fires. And my big concern is traffic. And it was before the fire. But after the fire, I got panicked because I sat in line waiting to get out. We had two methods of egress for all that development. And I sat in line for 25 minutes trying to get out of the gate and they were directing traffic. But should we have been in the position like Paradise up in Northern California where the fire came down the hill and with the winds directed, you know, pushing that fire, we would have been sitting in our cars, we would have been incinerated. And a lot of us can't walk a long distance, so to get out of our cars and hike out wouldn't have been much of a solution either. So, I say no. I don't want more cars on that intersection, fire or no fire. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. We have Matt Lorimer, followed by Peter Faxon, and next would be Bob Bender. So, is Matt, yeah, Matt, again?
Yeah, it's Matt Lorimer who flew in from Dallas here to be here tonight, Charlotte. Okay, so, let's look at this, folks. Behind you is a flag. City Council, we take a pledge, a pledge of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and also to your citizens. That golf course, when people moved in there, was a golf course, okay? It wasn't anything else. The expectation was people were going to live there and it'd be the golf course. Now we have some rich developer, probably in the Cayman Islands, who knows where, who wants to make a lot of money. But tonight, this is not just another project. Do you know what, you know what he said? He said to your residents, "How would you like it, Tony, Kevin, or Charlotte, if somebody blackmailed your family and said, 'If you don't do this, I'm going to do something to you. I'm going to shut down that golf course and put a gate.'" So, my words to the developer is, have you ever heard of eminent domain? If you fail to maintain it, maybe we need to look at it. But the point is this, this is not just another development. It's your character, a city councilman. Do you think it's right to come into your community and threaten your citizens who have paid taxes longer than any developer who comes into town who wants to make a quick buck? That's what is at hand tonight, guys. Each one of you have a character. Would you allow your family member to be blackmailed? I think this is the most disgraceful thing that this guy thinks he can do is come into any community. It's un-American. Think about it. How would you like it if somebody came, your family member, said, "If you don't do what I told you," I'm basically, that's it. That's what they're doing. Tonight, this is about character. Each one of you is councilmen. You cannot approve this. And you know why? You should deny it on the fact that, who do you think you are coming in this community as developer and threatening citizens that you're going to shut down a golf course and make it look like the San Fernando Valley? That's what they're basically doing. You can't mitigate- You can't mitigate traffic. They said there's going to be 600 trips. What about the police department, the fire department? What kind of strain is that going to put on? Have you looked at that? Because that's going to be a huge strain. What's the response time? Does people's lives going to be different? What's going to happen when the freeway backs up traffic when people get off the freeway? Have you thought of that? We already have problems there. Those can't be mitigated. And let's put it this way, there's no need for this. I've been coming to council meetings for years. I haven't met 300 people coming here saying, I want a development and I want the golf course to go away. Think about these people's lives. They made an investment. They put money on the table. They didn't come to buy there so they can have a development. This is not the San Fernando Valley. You are not LA City Council. You are smarter than this. Use your brains. You have it. And care about your people.
Appreciate your comments. Next is Peter Faxon, followed by Bob Bender. Is Peter here?
Boy, that's a hard actor to follow.
Peter, you can move that.
And you didn't fly in from Dallas.
And I live in Camp Springs, and I've been over there about nine years now, and I'm a golfer. My parents first bought property there in 1974 on Margarita, and I owned that place until 1916. I have quite a following with Camarillo Springs, and I've belonged to Las Postes for 27 years. None of that makes much difference here. What faces me, what I see here tonight is a whole heck of a lot of people that don't understand that if we don't follow a pattern of doing something about this, there will be no golf course. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next is Bob Bender. Is Bob here tonight?
I think she has some more cards.
One more.
I think she got some more.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff especially. I'm here to oppose the NUI development. I really don't think I need to reiterate what has been said in opposition to this, but we're looking at problems with traffic, problems, of course, with flooding, problems with evacuations, problems with the wildlife, problems with recreation, and open space. So I don't see the benefits of putting the 300-plus houses there. I think it will destroy that unique community of Camarillo Springs. I think that the city can look at development in other, more strategic areas that would not compromise what that special springs offers to the city. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Next is Chris Seller, followed by Chris Valenzano. Is Chris here tonight?
Yep.
There he is. There's a guy.
Hello again. Hope you're not getting sick of me yet. I live on the west end of town by Nancy Bush Park, and I'm sure many people in this room are like, why are you up here talking then? Well, I'm here to stand with my brothers and sisters because I frankly see a lot of people in this room that probably will look, I'm going to look like them in about 20, 30 years. And if, after I live in this town for another 20 years, I wouldn't want them building a monstrosity at Nancy Bush Park. And I feel the same way about losing the golf course. And the main reason nine-hole golf courses don't stay open is there's really only a 20% difference in golf fees. That's why. So why would anyone go and play nine holes when they can go pay 20% more and play 18? This is the only golf course that is reasonable here. That's the only, this is the only golf course that someone like me could reasonably go to and afford. I make 100 grand a year. I'm barely making it in this town. And I can only afford to go to the cheapest golf course in town. I mean, you dock that down to nine-hole course, there's no reason for me to even go. There's a lot of great comments about egress. I live next to a retirement home, and I hear sirens all the time. What's that going to do to these people when they need to get out and go visit their grandkids? Or the grandkids want to come visit them? There's going to be emergency vehicles all the time. What if there's an accident? I live near Las Postes. Accidents all the time on that, on that. It's like the 101-plus right there. So, and then again, this, what about the water? Is Gavin Newsom going to bring his trucks down here and, you know, fund all these houses' water needs? I don't know about that. And also, on the housing units, have any of these units been scheduled or rated for low-income housing? Then why are we even talking? That's about it for me.
Appreciate your comments. Chris Valenzano, is Chris here?
Mr. Mayor, this is actually meant, once you're done with all of these items. I had intended it to be for the suggested action, which you've already taken up, but at the end, when you're all done with this item, I was looking to speak. It's not specifically to the New Urban West development.
Okay. Okay. That's the last card I have on this. I do have some nonverbals that I'll share with the council. There's Claire that's opposed to it. Evelyn is opposed. Barbara Drews is opposed. Teresa Lee's opposed. Carol Grove is opposed. Alfonso Renteria Boto is opposed. Milton Dorsey, I think he had already opposed, and she did. Okay, so I'm going to share these with the council members, and they can look. And I do not have any more cards on this particular issue. Would anybody else like to talk? Yes?
Can I just read something?
I'm sorry?
I just need to read something.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
But not speak.
Right, okay. And those to be shared?
For time, we have 40, what, about 45, and we have 60 people here in favor of it. So rather than taking the three hours for all of them to speak, we'll just give it.
Okay, they'll be shared, Ron, with the council. Thank you.
I hope everybody understands this was an update tonight.
This is an update. We are not going to, yeah.
We are not voting on this. It was a year ago September that it was sent off for referral. At some point, when the studies are done, it will come back to the city council. That's when we'll be voting on it. And that's when we need to hear from everybody as to what we, they, at that time, want us to do.
Okay, so the next card I do, there's a, I believe it's just your first name, Claire. Am I right on that?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes, if you would.
I'll be very brief. I know it's been long. I'm not a long-time Camerillo, I've been here five years, love this place, live up at the Springs on Gattana Avenue. And one of the earlier referrals that you voted down had to do with the freeway and the access and the freeway. The thing at Camp Springs is so dangerous, I will not even get on and off the freeway up there. I drive through that field, which is blocked during emergencies. During the fire that just happened, they poured the traffic off of the 101. I was one of the people that sat in the field, trying to get away from the black smoke and the fear. I didn't, I knew California had earthquakes, but God, the debris flows and the fires have been really scary. We do not need 300 more homes there. I would also say that this advisory council, they don't speak for me, and they don't speak for a lot of my neighbors. They may have brought you 40 more things, but like I sent a message to our homeowner association, could I ride the bus over here tonight? I'm opposed to it, and I couldn't get an answer as to whether I can ride a bus, but somebody's going to give me a ride. Thank you. I really do think that they're looking at it from a fear point of view for the golf course, how to develop, how, what they can, the best deal they can get so that they will be happy. And they're not looking at it from the point of the view of, we do not need 300 more homes up there. And I really hope you will take the big picture and not, not, not be under the impression that everybody up there thinks this is a great idea, because a lot of us think this is going to be really bad. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any more blue cards on this. Would anybody else like to come forward? Okay, so with that, again, I'm going to ask, is there anybody to speak on the status update for the Roadrunner and/or Ran Rancho and Associates? Anyone here to speak on that? Nobody? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., yeah.
I have a disclosure.
Yeah, do you have something you'd like to, just second here?
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions to staff regarding this project and regarding the timing. So am I going to be allowed to ask those questions?
Sure, let's ask them right now.
Before we go on.
Everybody wants to stay a little bit. We do have a little bit of a comment here.
Before we go on to the next, before we go on to the next referral, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
With apologies to Mr. Sandlin, who I saw just stand up at the podium, but I had a couple of questions on, on the NUWI project. My questions are with respect to timing, and they're going to be focused to you, Mr. Vaca. When I read the staff report, in fact, could you put the PowerPoint back on, please? It's the second to last slide, I think. Because this has been going on now for about 15 months, so I want to, I want to have a discuss, I want to have a clear understanding of where we are from a timing standpoint on this process. And I think that's appropriate during an update, right? Okay. So, Mr. Vaca, well, you're putting that in place. Let me just start. What the staff report says, the staff report says, staff, and I'm quoting, "Staff anticipates that in the second quarter of 2019, the SEQA," I'm on big page six, by the way, members of the council. "Staff anticipates that in the second quarter of 2019, the SEQA document scoping will commence in anticipation of having the SEQA document prepared during 2019, including completion of the studies on the fiscal impact analysis and the analysis of impact to property values." And I would just note that in my experience professionally, neither of those latter two are part of SEQA documentation. They're, they're separate and apart from it, and I'm, no, that's not it. Can you keep on going with regard to the timing on this? I thought we were going to see, well, okay, I guess it is. It's the last bullet. I mean, I'm, I am anxious to see, I am anxious to see the hydrology and flood control studies. And I know we're not there yet. And I'm not telegraphing, I'm not saying anything. I have an open mind on this, but I want to see that study. I want to see the fiscal impacts associated with a revamped golf course study. I want to see the impacts to property values. And I'm trying to reconcile what was said in the staff report with, with what's here. If I look at this last bullet, are you expecting, Mr. Vaca, that this is, all of these studies, including the SEQA document and the other ancillary studies that this council required in 2017, are going to be coming back to us before the end of this calendar year? We would hope so, but it depends on whether or not they're completed. So it's our goal to work with the applicant to try to move things forward, but we just don't know. Well, I, I'm concerned about the length, I know we are normally in, in these updates in a triennial, if I understand the process correctly, a triennial review process, but I'm also understanding that we're, you know, this has been, this is lasting a long time, so I'm really trying to drill down. What about with regards to the economic, the, the golf course analysis and the fiscal analysis and the impacts to property values? Would those studies, since they're not part of a SEQA document, is it possible for, let me back up. Have, has work on either of those two studies commenced yet? We've actually had a scope put together with a consultant for the fiscal impact analysis, but we haven't kicked that off yet. And the fiscal impact analysis is with respect to having a golf course that's eight holes, nine holes, 12 holes, 18 holes, et cetera, right? And the, and the property value issue. Okay, so the scoping has been done, but the, but the, or the scoping is completed on that? But the work has not yet started? I think my next, my question is to the city manager, Mr. Norman. In the past, this council made a referral based on some very specific requirements for studies. What ability do we have to control the timing on seeing those studies come back to us? What has, what has been the policy on this council? Well, practice. I mean, are we going to see everything coming back to us at once?
That's what we've always done.
But this, the staff report infers that that's part of a SEQA document. And I'm confused, because those studies aren't part of a SEQA document. SEQA doesn't deal with fiscal impacts. So I'm asking, what has been this city's practice in the past with regard to those studies? How have we?
They'll come back when we look at the issue.
All in the aggregate?
Yes.
One big?
Yes. For the last 32 years, that's the way it's been done. I don't know about before that.
I can't ask you about before that. All I, all I can do is.
Well, I was sitting out there telling them they were doing it wrong before that.
Last two years. Well, I'm, I'm, I guess, I will say, I'm, I'm discomfited by the fact that I know these things take time. But what I really want to see happen is to have this process, to the extent practicable, accelerated so that we've got, we, we, we have these things coming back for us. And I guess my, you know, we only have an update, and I can only say, I'm hopeful that we get these studies back to us ASAP. I've said my piece.
Mr. Mayor? Any other comments?
One comment more of a disclosure. I'm just in the spirit of transparency and making sure I remain within the policy. While I was a candidate for this office, I was not yet elected. I've been following this project very closely. I did attend one of these workshops, the technical workshop in regards to the flood mitigation. I think that was in October. And at that time, following it, I did have a personal conversation with both Jonathan and Ron, I mean, just in regards to this project and to familiarize myself with the project. I just wanted to simply disclose that.
Any other comments from any of your councilmen? Okay, Charles, if you could come forward, please. Again, three minutes.
Honorable counsel, staff, this is for the project that is at the end of Glenn Drive that is landlocked by a railroad track that currently houses, it's actually directly in the center of Ventura County, which handles our bus system that operates throughout all Ventura County. And for the need of our growing transit system, we've been working on this project with a staff for the past couple of years to develop the property into a parking lot that connects to the city yard as well, the public works department, and have even flow that goes around the property. We're just here to give a status update that we're still moving forward, even though we sold our company. Now we are landowners instead of transportation operators. Lot less stress, but we are still moving forward with the project, and we appreciate staff's patience with us, and looking forward to make a beautiful transit system there.
Thank you, Charles. I didn't respond, Charles Sandlin. Apologize for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kilney.
We won't talk about the football game, Charles. Please.
Oh, man.
Thank you, Charles.
Now, let's not get started.
Thank you.
Good. Let's just talk about the game.
Okay, anybody else like to come up and talk about the Roadrunner? Okay, anybody for Ran Rancho and Associates? Okay, so with that, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I'm going to ask, we've been going at it for about three hours, if we can take a five-minute break, and we'll get back to.
Kevin, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe, yes, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Mr. Valenzano had asked to speak on this side.
Thank you, and I would have spoken earlier. I didn't realize you were going to take up one so much earlier in the item. Thank you for the time to speak today, and I did also want to thank Ms. Craven for the last four years on the City Planning Commission. I wanted to publicly thank her for that. During my time on the Planning Commission, I'm going to still put some of these comments on the record, but during my time on the Planning Commission, we did take up the Tessa Robles development, and based mainly on the proximity of the development to the freeway, the number of stories, and my belief of how the project was going to look overall, I actually voted no on that project. And unfortunately, I was the only no vote on that project. During our meeting, the planning department staff told me that my concerns that I had expressed were unwarranted, and they would never allow anything negatively to impact our community. My fears were not recognized by staff or by the former council, not the current council, but the former council, until it was too late, until the three-story walls, I like to call it, was built along the 101 freeway as you enter our beautiful city. It's a permanent eyesore and definitely a health hazard. And since you've already taken action on the item that I was going to speak on, what I do want to do is I do want to applaud this new council for the ability to see the problems with the Maddox GPA request this evening. And I can only hope that you will continue to have the ability to see the problems to have the ability to see the problems with poorly developed projects and poorly developed requests that are brought before this commission. So thank you so much, council, for your actions this evening, and wish you all best luck in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to go? Okay, so with that, we're going to take about a five-minute recess here and get back to this other item.
Keep it short, because we've got a long way to go.
I'll do that with him. Okay, got that. Let me turn this on.
So this evening, I'll be giving an update on the former fire station. We're going to start with an aerial map of the fire station. The fire station property itself is located here where I'm pointing, where it says "former fire station." In this map, to the north, to the top is north, to the left is west. So to orient you, we have the off-ramp here for Lewis. Here is Glen. Dizdar Park here, and as we move to the east, the former fire station, and then continuing further to the east is St. Mary Magdalene Church and School. So over the last more than year, the city and the church have been in negotiations with regards to the possibility of the church purchasing the former fire station. Here is a street-level photograph of the former fire station, taken from the viewpoint of Ventura Boulevard. So the history of our negotiations with the church have been, initially, the church had expressed an interest in using the existing buildings for office space. However, after further analysis of the buildings, the church concluded that the cost was going to be excessive. In an agenda report that was submitted to the council on September 5th of last year, we noted that the church had concluded that the total cost to rehabilitate the building was going to be approximately $1.6 million. So the church concluded then that the building was in such a deteriorated condition that it was not financially feasible nor responsible for the church to repair the building. Then the discussion became with respect to the possibility of the church purchasing the property, they had indicated an interest in possibly building a gymnasium. So at your September 5th meeting, we discussed that proposed use, and it was the direction of council at that time to authorize the city manager to obtain further information from the church, requesting that it be submitted by November 15th of 2018 with regards to how that gymnasium would look. Obviously, not final plans, but at least some diagram indicating the size and location and some other details. However, we were then advised by the representatives of the church that they had decided that they were not going to construct a gymnasium on the site due to the expense. So most recently, in early December, the church has indicated an interest in possibility of, instead of the gymnasium, was to build a parking lot at that location. Now, with respect to the value of the property and some details about the negotiations, the fair market value of the property, the city and the church had jointly retained Kevin McAtee to appraise the fire station property. Mr. McAtee is a member of the Appraisal Institute, the initials of that are MAI, which is a substantial qualification for an appraiser, and he has had substantial experience with appraising property. However, the church decided that they did not want to pay the fair market value according to the appraisal, and they also, as part of the negotiations, were requesting that the city remove the existing buildings on the property. The consequence of that would be, if the city were to sell the property to the church at less than the fair market value, or if the city were to invest funds in the project being proposed by the church involving the removal of existing buildings, that that would trigger the payment of prevailing wages, which typically can add up to 25% to 30% of the cost of a project. And the church had indicated to us that that would not be consistent with their budgetary analysis of this site. So the suggested action tonight is for the council to consider two actions and two options. One would be to direct staff to return to the council with the necessary actions for two items. One, the demolition of the existing structures on the former fire station, and two, the retention of an architect to prepare plans for the expansion of Dizdar Park to include the former fire station, or other action as the council may determine to be appropriate. So that is the staff report, and I'm prepared to respond to any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Perick tonight?
I have one question.
Please proceed.
With the retention of an architect, would that would include, then, I would assume, public input as to exactly how the expansion of that public park would occur?
Yes, I would have to probably defer to Mr. Norman on the details of how that would work, but I do know, for example, that with the Courthouse Park, we're seeking a lot of public input there. And I can also say, from my knowledge of the history on this, that there's been an interest by the council to make sure that whatever is done at Dizdar Park would be coordinated with what we do at the Courthouse property. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Norman?
I'd agree with the adjunct city manager on that one.
Okay. Well, now I have another title, so.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Mr. Perick, I do have a blue card, Matt Lorimer, just come up. Again, Matt, you know what the deal is. Thank you very much.
Matt Lorimer from Dallas, I just flew in. So here's the deal. This property cost us, the park, $1 million. The firehouse, $300,000. I got to tell you, tonight you have a decision to make, but in the park side, you have Adolfo Rancho. He was a person who was obviously very wealthy. He had property all over. The fire station there represents the working class. This city has $200 million. I think that, it's not like the Courthouse, that place there, people's lives, they save lives. You have to decide. I think it should be saved. I'm going to tell you why it needs to be saved. Because it's a piece of history. In cities, what is your role? Is to preserve history. Why just the Camarillo Ranch House? Do we just support people who are vastly rich? That represents firefighters last year who saved people's lives in this community. And to me, that means a lot. Working-class people in this country always seem to take a second class in the bus. It's not right. For some reason, why do you have to be a famous actor to go visit homes? Why can't you be an ordinary working-class person? I think it should be saved. I know it's a lot of money, but let's look at this. You're going to spend city money to demolish it. What you need to do is get a realtor, I've talked to realtors, some of them would offer to do it. I think you should sell it to a dollar for an organization to restore it, keep it on-site. You're going to spend money to tear it down. Why not give an opportunity, put it out there, make it a short window, and see if we can get somebody who will restore it, it will be maintained as a historical site? I think it's important that we don't just tear down buildings. This building is not like the Courthouse. I agree, the Courthouse should be torn down. This is a fire station that represents working-class people, and what does Camarillo have now? Just a Camarillo Ranch House. I poured you guys to save that place, and I think it should be a police substation. I really think it's a great location. I don't think you should tear it down. I know there's been a lot of talk about this for years, okay? We're going to open a restaurant. That's why you originally bought it. You were going to save it. Remember that. And the thing is, if you tear it down, what are you going to, you should rename the park $1.3 million, waste of taxpayer dollars, because that's what you're doing. You know, Kevin, you voted, Charlotte, you were there, the old city council, you guys wanted a restaurant, you wanted to preserve that building, okay? I think it's the only building beside the Camarillo Ranch House that represents the working class of this country. If you tear it down, you can't rebuild it. Think very, very carefully before you make that decision tonight. So that's what I believe, so I'm a lonely voice. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Jeffrey, we have another one, please. Get to see what that is, please. Yeah, is that for this agenda? Okay, Gary? Gary Cushing? Thank you for...
Gary Cushing, CEO of the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce, and this is not from the Chamber of Commerce because we've not taken a position on this, but as a citizen of the city of Camarillo, I've watched this building sit there for too long. Let's take it out, let's redo that park so our entire community can now use that park. We see people go to that park every day. They come up, they get off the trolley, they have lunch with their family, they get back on, and they go and enjoy that park. Let's make it something we can enjoy for all of the citizens. And to make it a substation, you're going to spend millions of dollars. If you want a better response time, let's hire another police officer to go along the boulevard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't have any other blue cards. Mr. Moshe, do you have a question?
Yeah, if I can, I want to ask a question of our city attorney. It's my understanding that selling the fire station for a dollar is, there's complications around that. Would you be able to explain?
Well, one of the complications would be that if you sell it at less than fair market value, then the purchaser of the property would, on whatever project they would construct, would most likely have to pay prevailing wages. And when you pay prevailing wages on a project, it adds 25% to 30% of the cost. And so that's one of the issues with respect to that. There were efforts in the past to, I think it was called Grand American, was a potential purchaser of the property as a restaurant. They backed out and decided not to pursue it. So this has been a property that the city has for many years, been trying to come up with a solution. The most recent efforts in the negotiations with the church were unsuccessful for the reasons I described. So now you have choices. You could expand Dizdar Park or some other choice based on your direction.
Based on his answer, I have another question.
Mr. and Mrs. Craven?
So your answer was, well, one complication is they'd have to pay prevailing wage. Wouldn't that also be, if we're not a government agency that we sold it to for a dollar, wouldn't it be considered a gift to public funds?
That's also a risk. Because when you spend public money or devalue an asset, it has to be for a public purpose. So you point out, as you did in your question, that that would be something that would also have to be reviewed.
Any other questions, Mr. and...
This is more of a question for all of us, if that's okay. I have heard from a number of people about the historical value, it's not the word, but that there is history with the fire station, and I'm wondering if there's a possibility, I don't think the building is worth keeping because of that, but I'm wondering if there's a way to incorporate some sort of a memorial to firefighters or to first responders into the park. You know, I think we've all been...
On the previous plan that we had, there was a fire station theme, so to speak, on one of the plans, the latest that I remember. But I think that's for us to decide later. Right now, we've got to decide what we're going to do with it.
Any other questions? Does she have a question?
No, I'd like to speak because I was part of the decision to buy it.
There's a member of the public I can see who's waving a blue card.
You can say your name again.
Chris Zeller. Regarding the firehouse, obviously, you guys have done some due diligence on the cost of repairing the building. It doesn't seem to be worthwhile, to your point, Susan, for the first responders. One thing I noticed, living over off of Crestview, is the Springfield Dog Park is often, it's undergoing maintenance right now and updating, but it's usually very, very busy. But the Camarillo Springs Dog Park is not busy, and the Mission Oaks one, there's a lot of dog owners that don't like taking their dogs to a dog park that doesn't have fencing. Now, one way we could kind of cover your base is maybe make it a little dog park in the middle of town, take some pressure off Springfield and the noise complaints I know you guys have been getting over there. I've seen people get very upset about parking over there. There's already a park there. Having a dog park right there, maybe have a fire hydrant there for the dogs to do their little business on, you know, and kind of just make it cutesy, but in homage to our first responders in a very colorful, playful way, but also, you know, in a dignified way to kind of signify the historical significance perhaps. And dog parks are cheap. I mean, all you need is some water fountains, some chain link fencing, you know, it's a couple of grand, you know? Like, I think it'd be a good idea in the middle of town, especially with all the businesses. You want drive-by business in the center of town, in downtown. It's a great way to do it. Get some dog owners to go down there. They can eat outside. There's a lot of restaurants there with outside eating areas that can be used to have dogs there. You can take your pets there. It works great for, there's a dog restaurant in Oxnard and Thousand Oaks, Lazy Dog. Lazy Dog is killing it with dog owners because of that. And having a dog park right there could potentially benefit all parties at a reasonable cost, and that's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, any other questions? Okay, council comments? Do you want to start the discussion here, please?
Yeah, I wanted to start this off because I was here when we bought this thing. And the negotiations between Bill Little, the city manager, and Art Goulet, the public works director at the county, were quite extensive. I've got a folder about that thick of their memos, and they're actually kind of funny. But at the time, we thought it would be a good spark for the redevelopment of Ventura Boulevard, which was just beginning. I mean, that's, you know, we hadn't even redone the street or made it wider so we could make it narrower, which sounds funny, but that's what we did. And it didn't work out. Matt's right, I really wanted a restaurant there, and so did every single one of the council members at the time. However, we had a quite lengthy time restriction. The county would not let us do anything with it for five, I think it was five years. And so that stalled us, and then other things happened. We looked at all of the proposals for restaurants. The one that sounded the best was one that was going to have a firehouse theme, I thought, although it was also going to be a Mexican restaurant or an Italian restaurant. They, the company handled several different kinds, and it wasn't really specific. But it turned out that after they looked at it for a long time, they realized the lack of parking wouldn't allow them to have the kind of business they were hoping for, and then the economy took a dive. And we talked to other companies, but everybody agreed it wouldn't work for a restaurant. So even though we had wanted it for a restaurant to spark development, redevelopment of Ventura Boulevard, it obviously didn't work out for that to be our spark plug. We have looked at other plans. I believe that expanding a park would be there, but I also think we need to, before we start talking about this, I think we need to say out and out that we are no longer interested in talking to the church about their purchase of it, because I don't know if they ever actually turned us down for, we told them we weren't interested in having them use it for a parking lot, but I don't know if we ever heard from them after that. I personally am interested in retaining the property, not selling it to them for any reason. I am interested, and I would like it, to be a park. What type of a park, I think, is not for us to decide tonight. We can throw out some ideas. But I think we need to have public input and have a time when we're actually sitting around talking about what we want to do. But the first decision is, do we want to tear down the fire station and use that property to expand Dizdar Park? And my vote for that would be yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Moshe?
I'll be quite brief. It is, I think it's unfortunate that we weren't able to come to a deal with St. Mary Magdalene Church, but I'm glad that we are moving forward on this, and I would like to move forward on this, and I want to close the chapter on this property because it has been open for far too long. I think this is a great opportunity to enhance this public space, and I genuinely want to pursue something that'll enhance and help revitalize that portion of old... and help revitalize that portion of Old Town. So I can be in favor of this. Thank you.
Mr. Tremblay?
Number of comments. Number one, I've lived here for 36 years, and for a great deal of that time, I've looked at that firehouse property as I've been driving by most every day. This issue has gone on for a long, long, long time. Too long. Times evolve, and repurposing a property for the benefit of the community is a valid purpose and a good thing to do. I feel the same way as Mr. Moushey. Unfortunately, we couldn't close a deal with the archdiocese. And, you know, it went from being utilization of the building to gymnasium to parking, and it just wasn't going to occur. Mr. Lorimer, I appreciate your comments very much. My response to that is what I just said in terms of, repurposing a piece of public property to meet evolving needs is a good thing. I don't happen to agree with a substation concept just because I don't think having a new police substation, in my personal view, equates to having faster response times when you take into account how the city is patrolled and the zones that are used. I would favor, with public input, looking at this property, taking the form of suggested staff motion. I support both of the components of the recommended staff motion. I look at this property on an integrated basis with the old courthouse property. We should look at them holistically with a large Old Town view in mind and all the needs that exist with Old Town, including adequate parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and park space. So as far as I'm concerned, I can support the recommended staff motion. I think it's been kind of a long time coming, and we ought to do it without delay.
Susan, do you have any comments tonight?
I can't really add anything more than what everybody else is saying. I agree. I think it's—I like the idea of looking at it holistically at the same time as looking at the courthouse area and really evaluating what we need and getting the public input. And that's all.
Well, having been up here for some 20 years, I think we probably have discussed this particular project more than just about any project that I can recollect in the city, or at least it's been as much. We've been dealing with this for several, several years. And we really tried on this. I mean, we really, really did. We tried to get a restaurant there. I always was skeptical of that. The restaurant really tried. Some significant things happened. We hit into a recession, which put this back. I don't need to get into a long discussion about what happened. There was issues perhaps with alcohol sales next to a school. There were several issues with that. And it just—the ingress and egress, it was just a real push to try to get a restaurant there. The church really tried on this. I thoroughly believe that they tried. The city bent over backwards to try to get this thing to work. We really, really did. Like Mr. Moushey said, it's unfortunate. It didn't work out, but it was not from a lack of effort. Both parties really, really tried here. So what do we have now? We've got an opportunity to extend a park. And keep in mind, to my understanding, it's the only park that we've got on that end of town here. So—and the public uses this. It's a public park, and they do use this. In favor of dog parks, but I think we need to think long and hard of there. And I think it's more in tune with more of a public use with that. And I think it could be a state-of-the-art park if it's done correctly here. Keep in mind, the building—we really tried to have somebody take over the building. It's full of asbestos. It's not earthquake-proof. It's in terrible, terrible condition. If somebody were to try to rehab it, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars just to rehab it, and money doesn't grow on trees. So again, I think all the sides really, really tried to make this work, but in this business, sometimes things just don't work out. Not from a lack of effort, a lack of other things. So I can support moving forward and seeing a design and seeing what other use that we can use. And I think a park would be very permissible here. So with that, anybody else have any comments?
Mrs. Craven?
I move to have staff return to the council with the necessary actions for demolition of the existing structures on the former fire station property and for retention of an architect to prepare plans for the expansion of Disdar Park to include the former fire station property.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I want to ask, Mrs. Craven, would you be willing to amend the second part of that motion relative to the retention of an architect to prepare plans for the expansion to incorporate that—in that, the same process that the city is using for the old courthouse property?
Process, you mean for—
Public input.
Sure.
Community workshops, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. Then if you incorporate that in as part of your motion, I will second that. I will second that as well.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, let's get on to item C. It's District Services Proposed Meeting Schedule for Public Hearings Professional Service Agreement with the National Demographics Corporations. Mr. Tully, are you going to take that? Who's going to take that?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
With direction received from City Council on January 9th, we are now embarking on a process leading to the creation of districts for future city council elections. The item before you is a request for a budget appropriation to fund the transition to district election and a request for authority to hire the National Demographics Corporation to provide districting services. The National Demographics Corporation has a considerable amount of experience and expertise providing districting services, and they're well-versed in the requirements under the California Elections Code. Included in the agenda report are a tentative meeting schedule and a brief overview of the expectations for each meeting. The meetings are intended to give Camarillo citizens the opportunity to participate fully in the process. The aim is to develop appropriate criteria for forming districts, to create the districts, and then to determine district election sequencing. The work that I experienced when I was at the city of Ventura was with the National Demographics Corporation, and they did a very good job of the public process and involving the citizens in the process. We request a budget appropriation of $55,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to fund the transition to district elections, authority to execute a professional services agreement with National Demographics Corporation to provide districting services, authorization to spend up to $5,000 on translation services, and approval of the tentative meeting schedule. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Clifford, tonight? Any questions? No questions. Okay.
Later it gets fewer questions we have.
That's true. Okay, so what's the options here for the council, then?
Move staff recommendation as stated in the agenda packet.
Number one?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Now, Mr. Clifford, you have had experience with this organization, and they're very qualified and very good at what they do.
Yeah, they certainly are, and they do a really good job describing the process to the public, engaging the public in the process, as well as having the information readily available on the city website.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Need further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Let's get down to item D. It's the Sidewalk Vending Ordinance Amending Camarillo Municipal Code.
This item, as mentioned, is to amend the municipal code to encourage sidewalk vending. And this is as a result of Senate Bill 946, which was signed into law and became effective on January 1st of this year. The purpose of the bill was to encourage basically a microeconomy, but what it required was for us to have an ordinance to be able to manage the sidewalk vending so that it could be done to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors. The ordinance goes on to describe what a sidewalk is, and basically, it's any paved surface in the public right-of-way, provided for the use of pedestrians, and also includes pedestrian paths in parks. The ordinance also describes a sidewalk vendor, but basically, it's the same as in Government Code Section 51036A. And really, it's somebody who may have a cart, may not have a cart. They could have a pedal-driven cart, a wagon, a showcase, a rack, other non-motorized conveyance, or from one's person, perhaps a fine raincoat. We really have two different—just seeing if anyone's paying attention. We have two different types of carts. We have stationary and roaming, and as the names imply, one stays in place and the other travels around. The ordinance requires several regulatory requirements and seems very ordinance at the outset, very difficult to manage at its outset. It requires seller's permit from the state, permits from the county, permits from the city as well. The ordinance goes further to describe the regulations relating to the placement of the cart. This slide shows a few of those, but there are extensive regulations included within the ordinance. And really, what they are intended to do is to protect the integrity of the pedestrian environment and make sure that the vending is done safely and in a protective environment. And in case that doesn't quite go as expected, there's also outlined within the ordinance the requirements for code enforcement of the ordinance itself. And in case you're wondering, right now, if you look in this— you can tell I'm not a photographer, but if you squint and really look at the empty hangers, you can see there are some clothing racks outside. Those are covered under Policy Number 7.05, which does allow that at this stage. This ordinance is not intended for vending by retail establishments. They have other options, including the Policy 7.05, of which I have copies if you're interested in receiving them this evening. And we also have the opportunity for other special event permits. And with that quick overview, then, that basically concludes my presentation. What we are doing, though, however, is developing appropriate forms and procedures from an administrative perspective and also making sure that we will have bilingual information available. Not that we're expecting a lot of people to begin sidewalk vending. We're, in fact, expecting very few. And so this evening, we're hoping for a first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, any questions of staff at this point? Mrs. Craven?
This ordinance, like all of our ordinances, has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation, and it's expected that people will read it there. My guess is that the people or the person—I only know of one sidewalk vendor in Camarillo. I've only seen one, and there might be more. But my guess is that the people who operate those don't read the newspaper of general circulation where these things are published. How do we plan to notify these people that they have to comply with the ordinance? Because there is a good chance they may not even know there's an ordinance being passed.
Well, what we'll do is we'll make a lot of information available on the website. We will take the ordinance information. We'll put it into somewhat of a guideline format, and we'll probably do it in English so that that information is available. We'll try contacting—there's basically one yard in Oxnard where a lot of the people who do sidewalk vending tend to congregate. We will approach them and give them that information so that they're aware that we do have an ordinance and regulations in place in Camarillo.
I hope we do that kind of thing. And if that—if they don't have somebody there who's in Camarillo, maybe one of those people knows somebody who's operating here. Because I have a feeling these people don't go to the city website very often either. I mean, I just think we have to be realistic. We can say, okay, we're publishing it back in the classifieds, and we're publishing it. And that works for a lot of things. When we're putting stuff out to bid, especially when they're hungry, the contractors are looking for those. They know where to look for them. But somebody who's been operating a push cart in Camarillo for years, all of a sudden, wouldn't have any reason probably to go to the city website. And I doubt that he—or that they read the classifieds in the paper. So I just—you know, I want to make sure we do what we can to make sure they know about the ordinance so that they can start the process of compliance.
Mr. Tremblay?
I want to compliment staff on bringing this forward so that everyone knows Mrs. Craven and I, on the policy committee together with staff, spent two relatively lengthy sessions on this. And we looked at a lot of the—we looked at a lot of the practical side of how this ordinance needs to be rolled out, including some of the operational requirements, what happens if someone gets in an enforcement-type situation, et cetera. Charlotte, to echo what you said, perhaps one of the outreach areas is that typically, I think, many of these vendors will have permits from County EHD, from County Environmental Health. So we ought to make sure that we reach out to County Environmental Health and say, we now have this process in place. And I think that will help get the word out as well. So—
Certainly, and we've done that already, and County Environmental Health has already agreed that should they hear of anybody wishing to come this way, they will let us know. But I will contact them once again and just confirm our interest in—
Thank you.
—collaborating with them.
Thank you. And this is one other thing. When you do these ordinances, it's an iterative process because it may not all be 100% there. But we're certainly far enough along the line where we're—we've gone a long way down the road. You can't anticipate every eventuality, but I think we're a long way down the road on this. So I'm happy to support that and ready to make a motion when—
Okay, I see. Any other questions?
More like a point of clarification, just so people know. This will not apply to private shopping centers or plazas.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, unless there's a push cart that goes into there. But if it's related to a store—
No, this is only on the public sidewalk.
Only on the public sidewalks. That's right.
Okay, so with that, I'll request a reading of the title of the ordinance.
This is Ordinance 1161, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Camarillo adopting Chapter 5.42 of the Camarillo Municipal Code pertaining to sidewalk vending. And I will, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we waive for the reading and introduce Ordinance Number 1161, amending the Camarillo Municipal Code to add Chapter 5.42 on sidewalk vending.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's get down to item E. It's the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce Professional Services Agreement. Do you have a staff report on that? Tully, do you have that one, too? You're a busy guy.
In May of 2018, City Council approved an extension of the Chamber of Commerce Agreement for Designated Services. In September 2018, the Economic Development Strategic Plan was approved. To better align the services provided by the chamber regarding economic development, we revised the scope of their agreement. Rather than just changing the scope at this time and then coming back in May to extend the agreement for another year, staff has taken the liberty to create a five-year agreement. I believe this will enable us to continue our relationship with the chamber and to undertake activities to highlight what an outstanding place Camarillo is to live, work, and play. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this agreement, as would Gary Cushing, the CEO of the chamber.
Any questions? Mr. Moushey?
Yeah, I'll lead. The current contract expires in May of this year. Is there any reason why we're doing this four months early?
Yes. What we want to do is just—because the Economic Development Strategic Plan was approved by council after the previous agreement was done, this captures some changes to reflect activities associated with that plan.
And then the previous plan was, it's my understanding, it was three years, and then there was two one-year options to extend. So why, I kind of already explained it, but any further reason why we're doing, it says, instead of a 3-1-1, we're doing a whole block of five?
No particular reason, other than, looking back, we have never seen a time when there wasn't five years' worth of contract.
Okay.
And plus, I mean, important to note that the, the agreement does also include a termination clause. And so at any time, even within that, we have the ability to terminate the contract.
And I, I see a reference of Exhibit A, Scope of Services 2A, says chamber will be active in economic development program. To what extent have there been discussions between the chamber and city staff in regards to what exactly that will include, or what that'll encompass?
Basically, what it, what, the remaining changes within the document outline what that is. That was just really, that was sort of just a catch-all statement. That was included in the previous scope, and that's why we've detailed it with the changes to the scope.
And the, the economic development plan is relatively new. To what extent have we had discussions? I, I know since being on the council, we haven't had in-depth discussions at our study sessions, but to what extent has the previous council, other than approving the plan, have we, have we engaged in any in-depth discussion as to how to, how to implement and achieve objectives outlined in that plan?
Difficult question to answer clearly, but I think the best way to look at it is, is we have an Economic Development Committee meeting on Friday, and I think that what I intend to do at that stage is to request from the committee further direction on how to undertake the implementation and, and how much we want to bring back to council and what depth. And so we'll really scope out further the implementation activities.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a few of Mr. Cushing, too, if, if you wouldn't mind.
Cushing, sure.
So, I mean, I'm familiar with the contract, I'm familiar with chambers of commerce. I worked for the, the Greta Valley Chamber of Commerce for a very brief period, right out, out of college. So I'm a little familiar with the inner workings of chambers and specifically this contract. I know there's a lot of chambers throughout California who have it. We had a similar contract in Greta when I was there for that brief period of time. There are some things that are kind of overtly vague in it. Like in, in, in section one, I know that the chamber will staff and maintain public information center to businesses and residents. What does that entail? And then to that end, on C and D, says you guys will maintain, or the chamber will provide statistical information on demographics, population trends, community services, economic profiles, transit schedules, commuter, commuter information. And then D, disseminate, distribute current city maps, non-chamber business directories, lists, rosters, brochures. Isn't this, I mean, the city already does most of that already. Do we not?
Well, we maintain, the city, part of the contract is, we have lists in the chamber offices, so if somebody comes in and they said, where's a plumber I can get? Where's a hotel I can stay at? We have a list of all those in the chamber, so they can come in or any kind of service that's provided. We, we maintain those. We get a list of new businesses in the city, and we update those as we go.
Okay.
So that's that. We do distribute maps. We are the visitor center for, for Camerio. So we do field a lot of calls that if the chamber wasn't doing that function, the city staff would have to be doing that function.
Okay. And I know there's some things on here that we, we separately fund and/or we, we become sponsors of.
Right.
Like, just, just last meeting, I know we, we granted you guys $10,000 for.
Startup Ventura County.
Startup Ventura County, and that's a great event. And I know that we're a sponsor of the State of the City Luncheon Event. Is there, is there anything in this agreement that you guys would perform as a result of this agreement, as opposed to what a chamber would otherwise do? Does that make sense? I mean, most.
I know it's a living.
Yeah, yeah. So having been involved in chambers of commerce, most of this is, is stuff that a chamber of commerce already normally does. So is, is there anything specific to this contract that you guys are offering in addition to what you otherwise? Is there anything on here that you would not do without this contract? I guess is the question.
Yeah, there would, well, just like on the new stuff that's been put up, that we would maintain a list of available industrial properties. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't do that. Okay? Because I found that it's very time-consuming to do that, because I've been reaching out to all these commercial brokers to get that information, and it's very timely, I mean, time-consuming to get it. What's the other thing that Tully would, oh, the city business visits. We've taken that on now as a project to schedule those for businesses where the city was doing that before. So that's two things that have been added to the, to the normal contract.
And you'll do more of them?
Huh?
And you'll do more of them?
Hopefully, yeah. I had a terrible response. Well, I started doing this in December, and I think it was just the holidays that we weren't getting a good response. So we're going back out now. And when we have the Economic Development Committee meetings with the city, we're taking those and going to those people that are brand-new to the city to try to get business visits with them. So.
And then I know in here, this is probably my last question. I know in here that you will provide biannual, kind of biannual economic reports. Somewhere in here, I can't recall exactly where it is. But in here, you, you provide reports. I think it's, it's to the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, we do that on the, on the way media for two months, and then we do, we do do, every time we, we have an invoice, we also put out what we've been doing, how many ribbon cutouts we've done, how many businesses we reached out to. So, yeah.
You, do you guys publish that or print that?
It's, we give it to, we give it to the city staff.
Okay. But like in writing?
Oh, yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
As opposed to verbal? I know there's been some comments in the past that, oh, it's just, it's a verbal report or whatnot, and I'm looking for.
Dave, we've been doing that for a couple of years.
So the chamber presents to us a quarterly invoice. With that quarterly invoice, they provide a quarterly report with that invoice so that I can pay them for work that they've done.
Okay. That, that concludes my questions.
Chairman, did you have a question?
Any questions, I'm going to discuss it.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or Gary? Okay, I've got, yeah, I've got a couple of cards. Chris Sellar?
Thank you, Sean, for your poignant questions on this matter. I think you are smelling a lot of the things I'm smelling here. I don't understand why this city is funding the chamber with this contract. Like Sean was clearly pointing out, this is a, should be a private institution looking out for the interest of member organizations, businesses in this community. I don't see why we should be handing them $350,000 of our tax dollars to fund them. It clearly, it seems like they only do a few things, two or three things in a report. Doesn't seem like that warrants $70,000 a year. Is there any measurement of their performance? Because I've been reading a couple of reports for, and over the last 10 years, we've lost 8.2% of our jobs, and we've been having a contract with the chamber for several years. And that doesn't seem like very good performance. Oxnard has got jobs, Ventura, Thousand Oaks, all these other cities have gained jobs over the 10-year period ending 2016. Doesn't seem like there's any sort of goalposts in this agreement here. I don't know what a catch-all statement is. Vague, vague things like that is very confusing to a person that's just a lay-public person. I read that this chamber only has 500 out of 4,657 businesses in this city. It doesn't seem like an accurate reflection of the private interests of this, of this city. And I've also was here for the debates, and I know that there was some talk of an economic development director on staff. Well, if we're going to hire somebody to do economic development, what do we need the chamber doing all this for? So why would we agree to a five-year plan if they're going to, we're going to hire somebody for probably $100,000 a year or something close to that to do the work that they're already being contracted to do? It doesn't seem like a very prudent use of public resources. That's it for me for now.
All right, thank you. Let's see, we've got Matthew Lormer.
This brings me up to when me and Tony were running for city council. You know, you kind of look at this, and, you know, you've got to ask yourself a question, because every election, we keep having this comments like, why do we have so many empty buildings? What is the city's objectives? What is the measurement of them? And I think there's some interesting questions here tonight. You guys, you're the city, and you've called for an economic director, a couple of you. We have empty buildings. Every election cycle, when I ran, when I was here, it was constantly brought up that we have a problem. Are you setting benchmarks as a city for the chamber? I mean, I think that's a very interesting, I'm sitting back, listening to this, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, I ran three times, the same issue comes up, the city has not defined what the role is of the chamber, and it hasn't set benchmarks in trying to prove the area. So, you know, you guys are the city, and if you want benchmarks for the chamber, I think we need to set them, because obviously, if we didn't have problems, we wouldn't have signs everywhere that says, we need a lease, they're vacant, there's issues. I think you guys, it's your job to set benchmarks. And, you know, I haven't, he was dancing around there. I mean, I thought I was listening to Dance of the Stars there. He couldn't really define. And now I'm thinking to myself, Sean's got a good point. I'm sitting back here going, wait a minute, you're the city, why don't you define, you know, on what should happen? And then you guys should be, maybe you should have more meetings, get involved, but, you know, I'm thinking, wait a minute, every time we have an election, we keep hearing the same nonsense. What are you guys doing about the empty buildings? And I think you guys, it's your responsibility to set the goals. You're the city council. You're supposed to spend the taxpayers' money and set goals. And you know something? If the goals are not being reached, it's because you haven't set the benchmark. I mean, let's put it this way. If you have employees and they're not working, whose responsibility is that? That's you guys. You guys are the ones that set the tone. So I think there's some really serious issues here. You guys want to sign a contract, but what's in that contract saying what goals should be met? I think that's a very interesting topic, because I kept thinking about the empty buildings in the community. I'm just saying, set goals, and if there's additional things that need to be for the chamber, that's one thing. I'm just saying, I, I do see, you kind of ask yourself, you're signing an agreement, but what are the goals? I haven't heard anybody tell me, we're going to try to do advertising, we're going to work with the chamber, or we're going to do something. I think you are responsible for this. You're signing a contract, so I think you need to really define it tonight. I haven't heard anything. I mean, some interesting topics, because they come up every election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't have any more blue cards. Any other questions of staff here? Okay, what's the will of the council?
I'd like to talk about this a little bit, Mr. Mayor, if I can. So I was, I was surprised by this contract appearing in the agenda, and I know this is going to sound strange, because I'm a former president of the Chamber of Commerce almost 20 years ago, but I, I don't intend to support this contract as it's before us tonight. And I'll tell you why. First of all, the work of the, in my view, I want to clearly state that, in my view, the work of the Chamber of Commerce is vital. It's significant to the city, and it's significant to our business community. And the chamber does have, and it should have, a significant role going forward in the city's economic development. In other words, it's got a part to play, and it's got an important part to play, but I've got two problems with the contract. First problem is, it's five years. And a five-year term, in my view, is way too long. It's just too long. But more importantly, I think the approach, in my view, thinking big picture, I think it's structurally wrong in the context of implementing the new Economic Development Strategic Plan, which we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort before Susan and Sean, you came on board. There was an awful lot of time spent by staff and by the public in creating that plan. And except for one line in the contract, which is rather conclusory, it's on, it's 2A on page seven, the scope of services doesn't address the strategic plan. So why am I saying it's structurally wrong? The reason I think it's structurally wrong is the responsibility for the implementation of the strategic, the economic strategic plan, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, is diffused right now among three people. It's diffused among the assistant city manager, the community development director, and then in this contractor, chamber employee, which I think is probably Mr. Cushing, right? I have high regard for the three individuals, don't get me wrong. And I really appreciate, in particular, Mr. Clifford, you coming in, in recent months, and really taking the bull by the horns. But that said, in my personal view, the responsibilities are too diffused. And there's no one person to take a point. We need one person to take the point. One of my concerns during, that I voiced repeatedly during the development of the strategic plan is, I didn't want it to go sit on a shelf someplace. It's too important for that. It needs to be implemented, and it needs to be implemented aggressively. And in my personal view, having a robustly implemented economic development, having a robustly implemented strategic plan is vital for this city's future and what it's going to look like in 2045, and well after I'm gone from the scene. I have been advocating for the last two years that we have a dedicated economic development professional work for this city. And the job, as I see it, of that economic development professional, their sole focus is to work to develop that strategic plan each and every day. They get up in the morning and they say, how am I going to advance that economic plan today? And that is their focus. It's not diffused out, and no, absolutely no disrespect for Mr. Clifford, or Mr. Vauck, or Mr. Cushing, who I all hold in, in high regard. Now, I've been arguing that for two years, and I haven't gotten much traction. I'm, I'm hoping that's going to change, and we're about ready to have a, a goal-setting session.
Next one, C9.
Next one? Is it next, that soon? I'm hoping, I'm hoping, we're, I'm hoping.
No, two weeks.
Okay, so, so much as I respect the folks who would share point duties under the proposed contract, the contract doesn't address that issue structurally, and that's, that's the problem I have. And I, and I don't think the contract, as it is currently constituted, lends itself to an aggressive implementation of the strategic plan. So since we are now a new council, and we have not had the chance to discuss this, I don't think this should go to economic development. I think we should have a study session on council on this, or a special meeting, to work through these various aspects. I'd like to have a detailed discussion on the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I'd like to have a detailed discussion on the hiring of a, or potential hiring, anyway, because I know what I'm advocating, of a dedicated economic professional, and have that done before, before we approve a new contract with its scope of services. Otherwise, I think it's premature. I think we got the cart before the horse. So my request, because I don't think we're in a hurry on this. We don't have an expiration date until May of this year, and we can always do a one-year extension or a short-term extension, depending how we go. We work very well and closely with the chamber. I think we ought to defer consideration to the agreement and its scope of services pending discussion by this city council. And that's where I'm coming from on this.
Mr. Wilshay?
If I can, if I can follow up, if Mr. Trimble wants to make that motion at the end of this discussion, I would, I would support it. I want to make sure my, my questions were not misconstrued in that I am opposed of the chamber. I am opposed to this contract in its current form, most of what Mr. Trimble had said. I do see value in the chamber. I see value in our, in our partnership and what they've done thus far. In the numerous businesses I've started or have been involved in, we've always been members of the Camerio Chamber of Commerce, because we saw the value in doing so. So I don't want to devalue what the chamber does. I do want to make sure that we approach this in a really strategic, structured, thoughtful way, and that we try to achieve the objectives set out or outlined in the, the Economic Development Plan. You know, whether that includes, well, we, we can discuss what exactly that'll include and what, to what role the chamber will have. and what, to what role the chamber will have in that. They do absolutely have a role. But I echo Mr. Tremblay's comments. We do have four months to go. We're not in a hurry. I think four months is adequate time to have a discussion and if it is not, then we can just simply extend it for one year. But I think, I think we, we need to have, we need to have the discussion first. That is all I have.
I, I too feel strongly about the economic development plan and not sitting on a shelf and implementing it. I was hesitant with this contract, not at all because of, of the value of what the chamber does, but because looking into the future, if we do hire somebody in this fashion, then I think we really need to look at who's doing what. It's essentially the same thing you're saying, but I think we should talk about this. I think, I think there's an opportunity here to, to even have more coordinated efforts, which enhances, you know, what the city's doing and what the chamber is doing, so.
Anything, Charlie?
I can support delaying it.
Yeah, I have a question. A, why the five-year? Was there a talk about the five-year?
Yes. You know, it's been staff's experience that we, you know, we have these three plus one plus one contracts that really do end up being five-year contracts. And what happens is in the last two years, you're best, you're basically churning staff for the next two years, renewing a contract that basically the, the council has pretty much decided this contract's going to go for its five years. So rather than churning staff, we came up with a five-year. If council doesn't want to do that, I fully understand that. But right now with this current contract, you do have an additional year past this year. This was the first option year. You can always extend it for a second year if we're not there yet. You know, let's go back to where we were, you know, at the end of the strategic plan. I had a city council at that time who really was not ready to hire an economic development specialist. If you want to hire an economic development specialist, I support that 100%. I just need new direction from a new council. So I do support pulling this back, having that discussion with this council and getting direction because if you want to hire, you know, if you want to hire another person, you know, to do that, I fully support that. I mean, Tony and I have plenty to do without having to try to do this again. Okay? So you'll, you'll have no argument from me.
Okay. Well, I think that's a discussion to have at a, at a later date. A very, very thorough discussion, too.
It might be more than a 90-minute study session.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts here, too. So, okay, we've heard from everybody, so what's the will of the council on this end?
Let me, let me take a shot at the motion and it may be a little lengthy, but I'll try it anyway. I move that the council defer further consideration of this agreement and its scope of services pending further discussion by the city council on the economic development strategic plan, the potential hiring of a dedicated economic development professional, the implementation of the plan and how the Chamber of Commerce fits within this implementation.
Okay, I, one question.
It's a lot, I'm sorry.
The current contract that is in place now does stay into effect. So what they are, what, what?
What they're, what they're currently doing and what we're currently paying them for, we're going to continue to do that.
So, but the new stuff that's in here, like for instance, the business visitation, will that still be in-house?
That'll still be in-house as we have always done it.
Okay. All right. So that was my clarif, anybody else need a clarification on the motion?
Two long motions.
We do not have a, we do not have a second on that.
Oh.
Susan's seconded, so their motion and section. Is there any further discussion on that? Does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Thank you for being here, Gary. Okay. Okay, we're down to railroad quiet zone, ST 5009. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Yes, thank you. The item here tonight is the next step in our planned capital improvement project that's in our adopted CIP, our capital improvement program document. The railroad quiet zone, it's been in the CIP for a number of years and the trains are currently required to sound their horn as they pass through the Camrio corridor area with the crossings at Upland Road and Adolpho Road. And the railroad quiet zone project essentially would require significant safety improvements to be able to qualify for what's called a quiet zone, which is establishes a stretch of the tracks where trains are not required to sound their horn as they pass through. And I wanted to clarify that it does not take away the ability for the engineer to sound the horn if needed for safety requirement, for safety conditions or anything happening on the tracks where they feel this horn needs to be sounded, that could still happen. But the idea is to create a, a zone where normal traffic of trains through the crossings would not sound their horns on the approach or passing through. So the next step here to be considered tonight is to hire a consultant to perform a conceptual design to identify the alternatives and just the basic safety improvement requirements to qualify for the quiet zone. This is a, quite a lengthy involved process largely because it involves quite a few large agencies that are not easy or fast to work through. It requires a review and approval and coordination with Union Pacific Railroad, who owns the tracks and the right-of-way, railroad right-of-way through California or through Camrio. Includes coordination with the California Public Utilities Commission, who regulates the railroad crossings, very extensive diagnostic review process and sequential steps that are required through the process of looking at improvements to the crossings. This will also include coordination with Caltrans at both intersections because Lewis Road is State Route 34, right-of-way owned by Caltrans and the improvements would likely tie into Caltrans right-of-way improvements. And then it also include coordination with the Federal Railroad Administration. The FRA is the actual body that ends up establishing, approving the quiet zone. So quite a few agencies that will need to be worked with initially here in the conceptual design and then also get into next steps into the future on into final design and through construction. So just wanted to spend a little bit of time and talk about the typical improvements that are included in this kind of a project. I've got a, I showed this, last time we talked about this, when I brought it forward for going out with RFQ to select the consultant. This is a improved railroad crossing in Simi Valley. It's, it's the Sycamore Crossing of the railroad tracks on the LA Avenue intersection. And what's, additional safety improvements here are what we call these exit gates. So on the downstream side, if you will, the crossing and traffic coming through here, there's actually, when the crossing arms go down, there's the typical ones that stop the traffic on the approach of the crossing and then these exit gates come down, creating a barrier across this area to, a barrier for any vehicles coming this way. It also includes additional signal equipment, enhanced number of signals and also, a little bit hard to see in this picture, but there's these small gates that are pedestrian gates. There's one over here and then one on this side that are up right now or in this picture. And assortment of concrete for pedestrian access, rail fencing and gates essentially to create a sealed corridor area for the train to be able to go through and, and not have to sound the horn. Another example of an actual quiet zone improvements in Orange County, this showing, the, the signal is actually under, or has been activated, the gates are down, the pedestrian gate here, signage is in place, warning people there that the train will not sound its horn, no train horn. There are, as I mentioned, the rail safety railing for guiding pedestrians up to and the crossing on either side. This is a, an exit-only gate here in case somebody, a pedestrian is crossing at the time that the gates are activated, this, this gate comes down, this gate, this exit gate always swings in this way so that there's a, a free and clear path for pedestrians to get off the crossing. So this is just a sampling of the, the different types of safety improvements that are going to be required. And again, this conceptual design effort is going to outline the basic safety requirements and come up with the alternatives to be able to come back to council and review that and then in coordination with review of those different agencies to establish the, you know, answer the question of, with the required safety improvements in place, will a quiet zone be able to be established? So, next steps, just wanted to outline estimated project timeline. Quite a lengthy process. Right now, we're estimating it could be up to four years to get from today until a quiet zone is established by the FRA. And a quick overview of the timing would be this conceptual design phase roughly a year, starting now if this contract is approved with Rail Pros and then into early 2020, based on review with the agencies and again, coming back to council before we take the next step. Moving into accommodation of preliminary and final design, that would include any, you know, right-of-way clearance permits from the affected agencies, environmental clearance process. And, and with all those agencies, it's essentially a stakeholder review and, and approval process for, for these improvements at the crossings. So that would take us through estimating late 2021 where we would go out to bid and then construction estimated, you know, from start to finish to get the approval from the FRA in, in roughly a year. Now, this schedule extremely preliminary. You know, we just, we've never been through the process before with working all, all these agencies. There are several communities in California that have done this. Actually, when I was working in Moore Park, we were, there were improvements being done through MetroLink to basically establish a sealed corridor. The decision was made not to pursue a quiet zone at that time, the safety improvements were in place and I was in touch with a couple other cities at that time that were struggling through the process to achieve a quiet zone, which a couple of them eventually did, Carlsbad. There is extensive agreement requirements with the different agencies as it goes through along with, one of the big questions that will need to be investigated and finalized is what type of liability is, is the city required to take on with these crossings? We do know that CJPIA only ensures up to a certain amount of, of coverage and, and there's actually exclusions for this type of thing for coverage and there is a significant amount of, of liability that an agency, that a city would take on for these quiet zones. Again, information that we still need to get into and develop as we go forward. So the schedule will be refined as we go forward and then a real, a rough estimate at this point in the cost right now in our capital improvement program, we have $400,000 programmed for, for design and, you know, real rough estimate of 300,000 or 400,000 dollars for the design effort and then construction estimated at this point at 3 million to 4 million. Again, that's a real rough estimate based on other improvements that have been made at similar crossings for safety improvements ranging from a million and a half to 2 million dollars. And again, it's, it's all very site-specific on, on exactly what improvements will be required. So that cost estimate also will be refined as we go through, through the conceptual design and then on into preliminary and final design. So the funding source, as it's programmed now, is, the majority of it is general fund. We do have some Federal Transportation Administration, FTA, funding programmed now in the budget and our CIP budget for this project. Those are monies that are received by the city every year. The majority of them go to transit. Actually, currently now, every, is about 1.4 million a year that we receive in the FTA funds and pretty much all of that is currently being spent on transit. In previous years, when our transit costs weren't as high, we did accumulate some funds there that a portion of those have been programmed for this project. As we come into this next budget cycle, as we're updating our CIP and our budget, we will be refining that number and to determine how much of those FTA funds are, are still available. Otherwise, right now, it's programmed for general fund. As typical with, especially a very unique project like this, we would be looking for grant funding opportunities as we go along. That'll be some of the services that we'll be looking to the consultants that are involved to help us with. So that concludes my report at this time. The action before you is to consider awarding a contractor, Rail Pros, for the conceptual design efforts for the railroad quiet zone.
All right, any questions to staff?
Mulchey? Yeah, who owns the railroad crossing equipment, the, the arms that come down?
Union Pacific Railroad.
And if we, if, if we make changes to that, they'll continue to own it and they'll, will they be responsible for maintaining it or do we assume any kind of cost, future maintenance cost or any of that if we're?
Right. That, those are some of the details that'll be worked out. Again, not having gone down this road before, there could be some specifics of the equipment, additional equipment that's required for the quiet zone, that there may be some, some cost to the city to participate in that. As far as the actual mate, ongoing maintenance of those safety items, a railroad will maintain responsibility for that. You know, as far as touching and maintaining any of that safety equipment with the flashing lights, the, the arms, those kinds of things. I will mention also in the work in Moore Park included quite a bit of underground cabling between crossings and even down the line quite a ways for the train signaling equipment to be upgraded to achieve, you know, the safety improvements that were required.
Because we, we know for a fact that we'd have to incorporate some sort of sensors, right? Inside that, that safety, I'll call it a safety zone?
That, that's.
Right, in case a car gets trapped in there?
That's likely. Again, that, that's what this consultant's going to help identify, those, those basic requirements.
And then I wasn't here when, when this, when we sent this out to RFQ. But how many, I know that, I think this was covered though at some point, but how many complaints are we receiving annually about train noise?
So in, in general, about one to two complaints we receive at the city on train noise.
Per year?
Yeah.
Okay. And do we, have there been any accidents, car, train collisions at any of the intersections in the last 10 years?
We don't have any record of that and don't, yeah.
There was one at Lewis and, at the Lewis Crossing. A couple of years ago.
You mean?
Lewis, I'm sorry, no, not down from Adolpho, Upland.
At Upland.
Las Postas Upland.
Okay.
Car ran, car got hit by a train. It's the only one I know of in the town.
In the last 10 years?
Yeah, it was, it was recent, well, I don't, it wasn't this year, it wasn't last year, but it was in the last couple of years.
It's been quite, it's been a number of years. Yeah.
And then this, this does not affect the crossing at Pleasant Valley, it does not affect the crossing at Somus, the train will still be blowing its horn there.
Correct.
Right, and do, do we know how many trains that between, what are our quiet hours? It's between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, right? I know this is, this'll, the, the trains won't honk their horns at any time, whether it's daytime or nighttime. I assume that it's, it's probably safe to assume this is more of an issue in the evening hours or late evening hours. Do we have trains passing in Camrio at, at 2:00 in the morning and?
Yep.
How, how often?
Used, when I lived back up to the train, it was about one an hour, but I think they're more frequent now.
Yeah, I don't have data on actual number of, number of trains through. One an hour, this, you know, sounds like a lot, but that very well could be.
Yeah, I live, I live off Mission Oaks Boulevard. I mean, I'm quite a little ways. I don't, I don't recall ever hearing a train horn, but then again, I'm, I'm much further away.
Well, I lived on Marco Drive and I mean, my house backed up to Lewis Road and the, the railroad tracks and so I knew when they went by. But, and I can still hear the train horn where I live now at night. They, they do go through at night.
I don't, that's all the questions I got. I don't, that's all the questions I got.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, I've got a couple, Matt Norman, Matt's want to talk on this.
So, we're going to spend money because we have two complaints. He couldn't even give you, your staff couldn't give you any idea of how many trains come through here. This sounds like a complete waste of money. And let me remind you, electric cars came out, I don't know if you're familiar with this, and they weren't making any sounds and they required them to make sounds. You know why? Because people were getting killed because they didn't hear the electric cars coming up to them. This is ridiculous. There's been no accidents, so you want to throw money away for some project? You're going to create liability. You have no data to show in the nation that if a train, you hear it all the time, they never heard the train when the car hit them. So now you want to make a quiet zone, you just approve more development so you have more traffic in the city. This sounds like a special interest project and I don't know who it's for. Who, who brought this project forward? Who in the community? That's what I'd like to know. And what staff members took it on? I mean, this is a waste of money, okay? There's no reason for the city to do this, okay? And the thing is, there's no statistics. He says Moore Park. Moore Park is not the city of Camarillo. It doesn't have all the traffic. You don't have people jumping off the freeway, going through side roads. I mean, you've got to make a case to spend this kind of money, folks. I mean, I have heard very little data to support this project. I mean, the idea that he, he doesn't even have a clue on what time trains come. I didn't hear, oh, by the way, this is the report, trains come by at 5:00, 6:00. Here's the report. Anybody got a report saying what times trains come by? I mean, this is a waste of money. You talk about cities that waste money? You know, you didn't want to spend $1.6 million to do the firehouse, I get it. Now you want to throw more money away for something that you have no accidents, you have no data to back this up. And why? Because a couple people, is that the new model of city Camarillo? That two people or a special interest group decides to talk to a few private people at City Hall and say, hey, let's push this through. Somebody will make money, contractors or whatever, liability. But again, across the nation, where is the study showing that if you have a quiet zone versus a not quiet zone, what's the liability? Is it successful or not? I haven't heard anything. He quotes something out of Moore Park. Really? We're going to quote one city with no other studies across the nation, no other studies across California? And you guys are councilmen. Again, we just talked about throwing money away for the chamber because you didn't have organization. And now you guys are talking about throwing money away for this project. You don't have the data. You can't move forward. How do you move forward when you don't have data? You're elected officials, really? I mean, this is, this is why people come to City Hall and have problems because we get involved with this. You know, if it ain't broken, why are we fixing it? Seriously, think about it. I'd like to have some answers.
Thank you for your comments. We have Chris Zeller.
Hello again. Thank you all for listening to me tonight. I appreciate it. I know you guys have, probably want to go home, so I'll be brief.
No, I'm going to a conference in Palm Springs after this meeting ends, if it ever ends.
Well, yeah, it seems a little weird that we're going to spend this much money on just one intersection. Like, why just one? It seemed, oh, two? Sorry, excuse me. Two. I mean, it just, and I live near train tracks even without the horn going. When you live within, you know, a lot of those hoses there, you're going to hear it. Like, you can't have that much iron and steel moving and not hear it or feel it. It doesn't matter, it's not going to be quiet. It's a very, a very misleading word, I'd say, in this case, because I live near trains in two of my different houses, two different houses, and I can still hear the train horn at night. A lot of that is air temp, ambient air temperature. Civil War had a case where a battle went on half a mile away and it was a hot day, so all the sand went up and I'm going to bore you guys, but, you know, I can hear it on my end of town and I'm about as far away as you can get from that train and I still hear it. But, you know, this should be reflected in the housing prices. I mean, if you live near a train track, you're going to pay less for your house because it's, it's a nuisance. It is. And, you know, the train has been here since Adolfo-Camarillo was alive, so I...
1906.
Yeah, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem like a prudent use of resources and thank you for the date. Also, I'm just looking at the agenda report here. It says $300,000 to $400,000 on the design, but on your, on the sheet here, it says total authorized expenditure of $150,000. So it's a little numbers game right there. I don't know what that's about, but other than that, I don't see this as a prudent use of city resources when we have, you know, 20, 30 million that we owe and to the CalPERS system. Doesn't seem like $4 million is a great use when we have that bill and people depending on their paychecks and their pensions, you know, still needing their pension liabilities funded. So that's me. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments.
A question.
Okay, questions, Ms. Craven?
Yeah, it's been about, what, two years since the man came to our council meeting asking for it? And then he came back, maybe it was three years ago, a year or so later, he came back to a council meeting and wanted to know where it was. And we told him we were working on it and we did have council members who were really interested in it. We, I haven't heard from that man again. I haven't seen him. He hasn't been back and he's certainly not here tonight. I was kind of looking for him. He was concerned because he had a little girl. Sometimes people move into houses and they can't live with something as I couldn't. And I moved and I'm wondering if the person who was doing the complaining has moved and is no longer complaining.
I don't know if it's the same exact person, but we do hear from, like I said, one to two people a year. And one of the people that we hear from is a regular.
And this guy lived up in the Adolfo area.
So, I mean, tonight I don't have the information to confirm if it was, is that same person or not, but...
Well, I just found it interesting that the person who'd taken the time to come twice to make sure it was still going wasn't here when we, when it was on the agenda because he, when he came, it was under public comments.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff, at this point?
No, I really would encourage the new council to revisit this issue from the base idea of, you know, how many complaints were, we've really got on this thing and how much real public benefit would we get from this whole effort, which is going to take multiple years and multiple millions of dollars. I just encourage the council to review this.
I want to say something else about having lived right there by the train. As I heard it, the biggest problem wasn't the train noise. And he toots all the way from somewhere before, say it's northbound, somewhere before Upland to well after, well, before Adolfo again and going the other way. So I get it, two ways. But the bigger problem is in that area, there's some liquefaction and it rumbled. I mean, I had to go and put my stereo set on a shelf at least once a week or the thing would fall off. So Mr. Zeller is right, there's more than just noise from the horns, it's the rumble at night. I mean, the night that I decided I had to move was about 6:00 in the morning and I hadn't slept all night long and I knew something was wrong. I couldn't figure out what on earth was wrong, I just knew something was wrong. And at 6:00, the train started coming through and then I settled down and went to sleep and I thought, oh my Lord, when it gets to a point where not having a train come by every hour is what's keeping you awake, you've been here too long.
That's true.
So I, good.
I'll move to table, the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a, and a table of this. And I might also say, we've had discussions here for a few years here, but the votes were never unanimous on this. And specifically, the quiet zones, sounds like a really good idea until you get into the cost of this. And I think we all want to be cognizant of the cost and what's the highest use of money for, and the, you know, the benefit that it may or may not incur, so.
Mayor, as to the motion, we understand what table means. However, it is in the CIP and you can either direct us to take it out of the CIP this evening or we can wait until we get to our annual CIP budget discussion. Whatever your pleasure.
That would be more appropriate for getting out of CIP.
I think we should wait and, I think we should wait until we have a, until we have a discussion on the CIP. And under Rosenberg's rules, we don't have to set any specific timeline. It's just simply a motion, because I'm just sitting, Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
With you, with you tabling this very preliminary action, staff will no longer be working on the project. And I think you all understand that. So when we get back to the CIP budget discussion, when we get into those discussions, we will, you know, you will see it being deleted from the CIP as our recommendation. And then you can decide at that point whether you're going to accept that or not.
Okay, so there is a motion, was there a second?
Yep, a second.
There was a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, please vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. All right, so I think that gets us down, study session here.
Your honor, did everybody else have the chance to do council comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get to you. Everybody else did though, but go ahead.
We have council comments. We also have to do those four city...
Oh, you're right. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Could I do my council comments before we do those?
Sure, go ahead, why don't you proceed?
No, I'm not going to fade away. I got my coffee. I got a three-hour drive ahead of me. Okay, I'll cut the first one and bring it up next time. I'm hoping we'll have a library meeting next meeting? Okay.
Is that all scheduled?
The last one was canceled and I couldn't ask my question, so at some point I'll ask it. I have been, how can I put this? Three different women have contacted me about their concern about children crossing Ponderosa at Caye La Rota. There are a lot of apartments there. There's the low-income housing and apparently at one time, there weren't a lot of children living in the apartments. And I thought one of those was a senior apartment, not a low-income, but I could be wrong on that. Or sometimes those places change purpose too. But according to these women, and I haven't gone and watched, but the children, it's really difficult for them to cross. I can't remember if there's a crosswalk there or not. But they have to cross in order to get to school. And so what they're asking is, is there a way to, and I, you know, I tried to say, well, they could go on up to Las Poses and cross there at the signal, it's an extra light. It does get them to the school, but apparently it's shorter to go to the school by crossing Caye La Rota and then walking up and through. It saves them two blocks in the morning and not too many kids want to leave home for two blocks extra walk. So they were wondering if we could look at doing something. They said traffic is going fast, traffic's not looking for children. They have been told that even without a crosswalk, there is a, an unmarked crosswalk. That doesn't help the women trying to get their kids across. So I'm wondering if we could look at, I don't, I don't even know what I'm asking for, but some way of improving the safety there for kids to get to school.
So we have looked at that recently?
Have you?
It's been an item on Streets and Trends, I think within the last year, maybe it's already been a year ago. But, you know, we have taken a look at that location with pedestrian counts that, you know, do not get to the level of warranting a marked crosswalk.
Okay.
It is correct that it is a, an unmarked crosswalk at an intersection that's legal to cross there. Not advisable with a four-lane road, two lanes in each direction at the speed limit there. So based on our analysis of that, we, you know, and that, we are aware that people do cross there, we have installed warning signs on the approach of bike. It's basically a sign that shows a bike and a pedestrian. Essentially, it's just warning that there are crossings coming up. It's not a marked crosswalk. And so the recommendation was to install that and monitor it as we go forward.
Okay.
So, and I will also add that I think over the years, there have been several areas, I know up on Las Poses, you can't see it anymore because we repaved it, but you could see scars where actually we removed those type of crosswalks off of Las Poses at several areas. And, you know, based on just the, it's not ideal to have a marked crosswalk at an uncontrolled intersection.
Well, and sometimes I can remember remove, we moved the crosswalks because the areas were redistricted and the kids went to a different school. But, and, well, it doesn't matter. Okay, I asked that. The other one, and I don't know if anybody else had already asked it, but I was wondering if we could close in the memory of David Fish. He passed away. He was on the citizens patrol for many years and...
Yes, absolutely. I had somebody, I guess it's appropriate now to also adjourn in the memory of Bob Taylor. And I don't know if all of us, I think, up here did know Bob one way or the other, very active person in town, got into real estate, had a business at, at one time, active in many schools here and a tremendous individual and always willing to help.
He was our appointee to the...
Area...
Area, not the area, the area agency on the aging.
Area agency on the aging, yes. So, yeah, Mr. Tremblay, do you...
I also request that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Priscilla Partridge.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about, yeah.
Former member of our, former member of our community who was a wonderful resource. Spent a great deal of time in our community and Rotary and in a lot of other endeavors. She, she passed away.
Yeah, been a tough week with that, yeah. Okay, we're certainly, did that, did you have any other comments that you need?
No, I'm saving my other one for whenever we have a library meeting.
Well, okay, just...
I know we have to do these subsidiary bodies, but I would ask that unless there's something urgent, we've now been going for seven and a half hours. I would ask that we...
I started at 1:30.
Okay, so you get the prize. I would, unless there's something urgent on the City Hall office expansion, I would really suggest we not go into a study session after this council meeting. I mean, is there a way to put that, is there a way to put that off? We've been going for so long tonight.
The really, you know, we do pay our consultants to be here at our pleasure, but they've been here for seven hours also, waiting for the study session. I don't think it's going to take that long and, but I think it's important that we continue.
I wasn't aware, I didn't see them out in the audience.
No, they're in the...
Okay.
I forgot to mention the meetings I've attended. I attended the Airport Authority meeting. I attended a VCTC meeting. And today at 1:30, I went to a Fox Canyon groundwater meeting. I stayed, I, for everybody's information, I don't just represent Camarillo, I represent all of the cities that overlie the Fox Canyon aquifer, which is Moore Park, Camarillo, Port Huiney, Oxnard, and a part of Antura. And today, we finally got, gave staff direction for an ordinance that will regulate the amount of water we'll be able to pump. That ordinance will come back to us in February. We missed the time that we would start it in January, January 1st. So we decided today that we would delay it, we will change our year, our reporting year, starting with next year, from July 31st to the state's water year, which starts October 1st. So our reports will end the end of September. It was very important that I stay and I wanted to explain to you why I was so late coming in. Additionally, I think we need to, and maybe this will do it, get our new council members up to speed. And I don't know how much Tony has followed it, but I'm, I'm thinking we have three council members who need to know more about it. I was sent by Bert Perrello a staff report that the city of Oxnard sent out to its council members explaining exactly what's going on and how that will be limited. I'm going to, it's an excellent report. I'm going to... I'm going to, it's an excellent report. I'm going to ask the city clerk to distribute it to all, everybody, and if you'll read it, you'll then understand what it is that's going on. I don't think there's any need for our staff to reinvent the wheel and take it and write it from our perspective. All of the cities, cities are called M and I in the report, municipalities and industry. And there's only one industry, and that's gravel pits, and the rest are within municipalities. There's going to be some really big changes, and so I think that it would be beneficial to read the report. And then at the end of next meeting, which we are meeting now the last two years, not just the weddinsty before our council meetings, but also the first Friday of every month, second Friday. And we're trying to muddle through this new state-required groundwater plan. So anyway, that's my report on where I've been.
Okay. All right, so that, I'm going to reconvene the Industrial Development Authority meeting for January 23rd. And I'm now going to let the record reflect that all the council members are present. So that gets us down to item three, which is a consent calendar.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent calendar, and we do have an announcement. I think we have two new members. Mr. Malchey, would you like to explain why you're unable to vote on this?
Sure.
And Mrs. D'Angelo as well?
I'm going to abstain specifically from the minutes because I was not present for this meeting, nor was I on that, on this body at that time.
Let me just ask, because our attorneys in the past have told us that we could still vote on things like that.
Well, this attorney has said
That you can't?
That you should probably abstain if you weren't here because you wouldn't know whether the minutes accurately reflect what occurred unless you reviewed the tape.
I did not review the tape.
The tape or the YouTube.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
There we go.
Have to vote again?
All the reason for
You have to vote again?
All of us have to vote.
Susan and I are still voting. We're just, we're going to abstain from the minutes, but we'll still be voting on item B. Does that make sense? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes 3-2 with two abstentions in. Is that right? Because it's 5-0 because abstention counts as a
As a yes.
Yes.
Let's be clear here. It is 5-0 on item B, and it's 3-0 on item A with two abstentions.
Okay, so, all right, let's see. Departmental items, seeing none. With that, we'll adjourn this one. And I will open the Camarillo Capital Improvement Corporation's regular meeting. And let's see, the record reflect that all council members are present. Amendments to this agenda? Is there any amendments to this one?
No amendments.
Any public comments? Okay, we'll get down to
Move the approval.
Move the approval. Is there a second? Did I hear a second on that?
I'm sorry. I'm just going back up.
Okay, so the motion, a second. Please vote.
And I'm going to abstain again from the, from item A on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Me, too.
Continuing abstention.
All right, so that passes, again, is that a 5-0 with a 3-2 on the minutes?
5-0 on item B and 3-0 with two abstentions on item A.
Okay, so then that gets down to departmental. No departmentals. With that, we're adjourned. And I'd like to call the Public Finance Authority meeting to order, please, and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Public comments? No public comments? Move consent calendar to a second. There's a motion and a second.
I'm going to abstain from item A.
Regional abstentions. Please vote. That passes unanimously on B and 3-2 on A. Okay, so let's get down to department. No department. Okay, with that, we're adjourned. And we are down to the Camarillo Community Development Commission. I'll call that to order for January, well, it's still, it's not January 2030 anymore, but I'll call it to order anyhow.
It's a late meeting.
Yeah. Let the record reflect that all council members are present, and amendments to this agenda?
I have multiple amendments.
You've got all morning to tell us about them.
No amendments, Chair.
Okay. Okay, public comments? No public comments. Again, item three, the consent.
Second.
We've got a second.
Can I throw a curveball in here and abstain from the January 24th, 2018 minutes, but not the December 5th, 2018 minutes as I was on this board and present at that meeting?
Good point. Okay. And I believe, okay, so where are we? Okay, we're at a, we're at a motion, and we've got a second. Please vote. That passes 5-0 with, on the B, and then we had a vote for the December 5th was okay, but the January 24th. You were there, oh, you weren't there December 5th, so it's a January 24th is approval, and December 5th, there's an abstain because they weren't on.
Well, it's
December 5th, there was a, they're abstaining, but January 4th
No, they didn't abstain December 5th. They were here.
They were here December 5th, but they Where did they abstain, January?
January 24th of 2018.
I'm saying, I don't even know what day it is anymore. Okay, so do you have that?
No, I think we need more clarity.
So they're abstaining the December 5th?
Let me try it.
No.
I'm going to try this. So they're abstaining on January 24th of 2018 because they weren't on the council, so that's going to be
That's right. I thought it was 19.
So that's going to be a 3-0 vote with two abstentions, and then they're voting on the December 5th, so that's going to be a 5-0 vote.
Okay, very good.
Let's vote.
It's a good thing we only do this once a year, right? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Okay, so department, legal, no items. Okay, comments from staff? Any comments from staff on this?
No comments.
Any comments from board members? With that, we're mercifully adjourned. Okay.
No.
Yes.
You're going to study session.
With this, we're adjourned.
Oh, 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 sorry. I'm in the wrong meeting.
Well, it's not hard to do that. Okay. So now we are going to go to a study session in the administrative conference room. And will there be any announcements or anything?
None are anticipated.
All right, but when we do adjourn, we're going to adjourn to the February 6th meeting at 5:30 at the Camerillo Public Library. So right now, we're going to go to administrative conference room.